Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 15th, 2022 Board of Alderman Meeting. We will begin our meeting with a motion to approve the minutes of a previous meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Any questions, comments, discussion, changes? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on, we're moving to outside the rail. Is there anybody outside the rail that would like to speak on agenda items that are not on the agenda this evening? That are not on the agenda. So your item, I believe, is on the agenda, and we'll have a point for that after. Is it based on the meeting that you were here with previously?
Is it on the agenda?
It is on the agenda.
Can I do it tonight?
Yes.
It's on a committee report.
Yes, it is. So we'll get to that. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for items that are not on the agenda this evening? All right, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Mayor. The floor is yours.
Okay, very good, thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. Welcome to our group that we have over here. I had a chance to meet this troupe a little earlier tonight, and a fine-looking group of young Boy Scouts, I believe. And thank you for coming to observe the Board of Alderman meeting. So I have two issues I'd like to bring up tonight. First is that I would ask that you remove from the table the nomination of Joe Barbagallo for the Board of Alderman, and please take a vote.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Would the clerk please circulate the ballot box? Thank you. Go back. While that is happening, anything else, Mr. Mayor?
I do have one other issue I want to bring up right now. So earlier today, I received a letter in the mail, snail mail, from Oksana Davis. I hope I'm presenting or pronouncing her name correctly. She is the Executive Director for Racial Equity for the State of Vermont. And she was explaining a new initiative the state is rolling out starting October 26th, and it is called Ideal Vermont. And I've got copies of the letter right here. If we could send them around, that would be great. So Ideal is an acronym standing for Inclusion Diversity Equity Action and Leadership. And as I said, I'm handing out portions of that or that letter to you all tonight. And I'd like to read a portion of that for the folks at home. So this is actually was dated Monday, August 8th. This is the next week. So, "Dear David, as we transition from such an eventful and uncertain times these last few years, the demand for meaningful lasting change is stronger than ever. To meet that demand and continue moving Vermont forward, the state is launching a new initiative called Ideal Vermont, and we are writing to invite Rutland City to consider its readiness to join the inaugural cohort." Ideal Vermont stands for, and as I mentioned, Inclusion Diversity Equity Action and Leadership. This initiative creates a coalition of Vermont municipalities dedicated to advancing racial and other forms of equity across the state through shared learning and tangible actions. It fosters coordination to multiply, amplify, and build synergy across the state. Rutland City has been identified for this opportunity because it has demonstrated a willingness to confront and overcome inequity, including racial and ethnic inequity through actions such as the adoption of the Declaration of Inclusion, which is something we did a few months ago. Part of this transformative energy comes, is driven by our partners who have committed to embedding equity inclusion in their internal policies and their external programs. And mentions a few of the organizations, including the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, of which I have recently become a board member. The official launch date for Ideal Vermont is the 26th of October. On that day, we will hold a convening to bring the member municipalities together. At this convening, they will review initiatives' objectives, identify resources, and develop concrete action steps for municipalities to take. After that, municipalities will engage in regular in-person convenings throughout the year to share progress, troubleshoot issues, learn more about equity work, and other mutual support. In addition to the regular convenings, municipalities will have access to a resource library to guide their work and technical assistance from relative state agencies. Member municipalities may also or will also be eligible to apply for small grants of up to 10 grand each. So finally, we are hopeful that Rutland City will join this impactful and necessary work. Please reply to this invitation no later than September 12th. So there is a small fact sheet that was included. There was only one copy of that. I have it here, and I can pass it around. It just explains a little bit more. So I was thinking about it this afternoon. The way our meetings are set up, I was hoping that we could, I wanted to bring it up tonight, bring it before the board, and see if this is something that the board would like to go ahead and be included in right off the bat tonight, and you know, suspend the rules and go ahead and do that. Or, which is fine with me, you know, refer to committee, have a meeting sometime in the next three weeks to be able to come back and decide one way or the other. And that would meet the timeline that's spelled out here to give them an answer by the 12th. But we are invited. I thought it was my obligation to bring this forward to the Board of Alderman. I actually think it's a good idea, and either way the board chooses to go, it's fine with me.
Alderman Talbot.
So I think this is a great initiative. I appreciate you bringing it to the board, and I'll make a motion that Rutland City join the inaugural cohort.
Do we have to suspend the rules?
Yes, we do.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And a motion that Rutland City join the inaugural cohort.
Second.
Okay, motion has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, and the results of our vote for Joe Barbagallo as an appointed Alderman, nine yes and zero noes. Joe, welcome to the floor. If you wouldn't mind coming up, Mr. Mayor is going to swear you in.
If we can do this so we can capture it on camera here. All right. So if you could raise your hand, may I read that? I, Joe Barbagallo, do solemnly swear.
I, Joe Barbagallo, do solemnly swear.
And I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The office of Alderman.
The office of Alderman.
For the city of Rutland.
For the city of Rutland.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Absolutely. First off, I'd like to thank Mayor O'Leary for putting my name forward. It came as a total surprise, I will say that much. And I would like to thank you, the members of the Board of Alderman, for voting me into your group here. I may be one of the oldest members on this board now, but I'm definitely the new kid on the block, and I'm going to have a lot to learn, and I certainly will try to catch up as quickly as I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else, Mr. Mayor?
That's it.
That's it for tonight, fantastic. Okay, so we're moving on to additions and deletions from the agenda. I'm going to ask you all first, do you have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Due to a posting technicality like last week, I'm going to have to read in the agenda again and then ask you to vote on adding the agenda items. This is just, it's been a couple of weeks, there's been a couple of different things that have caused some of these postings to not go up properly. We want to make sure that we're doing things correctly and by the rules. So tonight, we're going to add all these items to the agenda, and because they all do need to be dealt with this evening. So I'll start with this, and then we can put it to a vote if you want to add them or not. So reports and letters from department, adding in these following sections. Additions and deletions to agenda. Reports and letters from department heads and officials. Chief of Police Summary of Police Activity for July. Barbara Spalding, RRA, VCDP Public Hearing Request. Treasurer Markowski Proposal for Lease 2022 Tractor, Trackless Sidewalk Tractor. Treasurer Markowski Treasurer's Report for July 31st, 2022 as well. And that's reports of, and letters from department heads and officials. Moving on to reports of standing committees. Alderman Torrey Public Works Committee Report. Alderman Savage Charter and Ordinance Committee Report. Alderman Wickham Finance Committee Report. And then the last item to add is under Board of Control Commissioners, a first and third request for West Street Grill Liquor Licenses. Can I get a motion to add those items to the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments?
Mr. President.
Yes, Alderman Gill.
Take this out of order. I don't think we should have the gentleman sit through the whole meeting just to approve his liquor license.
That sounds like a great idea, so we'll move that to the top.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute, we have to deal with this motion first.
We've got to add, officially add the stuff to.
That's fine, and then we can switch it, sounds good. Thank you very much. So motion to add these stuff to the agenda, it's been seconded. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and then the second motion?
President, I'd like to go into Liquor Control Board as soon as we can to deal with this matter so this gentleman doesn't have to sit through the whole meeting.
All right, moving Board of Control Commissioners up in the agenda to our next item. Can I get, we have a motion, and can we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, yeah, I probably could have just done that. Okay, so moving into Board of Control Commissioners.
Motion to go into Board of Control Commissioners?
We have a motion to go into Board of Control Commissioners, it's been seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now in Board of Control Commissioners. All right. So we are looking at a liquor license for the West Street Grill LLC. It's a first and third-class liquor license for the restaurant. We get a motion to circulate for signature.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to circulate for second, it's been seconded. Alderman Talbot, do you have a question? No, okay. Any comments, questions, discussions? Would you like to say anything before we do this? Just here to watch?
Yeah, I just wanted to attend to see if there was any questions for me.
Okay, great. Any questions?
So, Mr. President.
Alderman DePoy.
I'm glad you're here, I appreciate that. I've often said that if there's, if you have business in front of this board, most of the time, we're not going to say anything. You know, most of the time with business opportunities like this, we're going to, you know, take a look at stuff and approve it. But if you have business in front of this board, please be here. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Awesome, thank you very much, Alderman DePoy. All right, hearing no other further, no further discussion. All those in favor of circulating for signature?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Can I get a motion to exit Board of Control Commissioners?
So moved.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Out of Board of Control Commissioners. The clerk was circulated for signature. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay. Moving back to reports and letters from department heads and officials, we will start with the chief summary of police activity for July. Chief, the floor is yours.
Well, first, thanks for letting us appear tonight and spend a little bit of time with you. I want to introduce our crime analyst, Nate Thibodeau. We'll actually do the presentation, but as you know, we meet with the police commission every month, second Monday of every month at 6 o'clock at the police station, and we present a report to them on a monthly basis to kind of highlight where we're at, you know, the previous month and where we're at, sort of looking at a five-year period, you know, relative to kind of what we typically deal with on a, sort of an average year. Last month, Nate sort of restructured that report. It's a little different format now, so the commission felt it would be appropriate to come before the board and share that with you. So with that, I'd like to introduce Nate.
So I won't be going over this whole thing, but it's a pretty much a breakdown, a synopsis of July, what police officers have seen and types of cases that they've done. But I do have highlights in the back that I would like to present some information on, and that's in the other information. The first note has to deal with larceny for motor vehicle for maybe a year now, a little over a year. There's been a certain individual that has been breaking into a lot of cars. So a certain individual has committed numerous thefts from vehicles due to heavy drug use, was arrested and held on $5,000 bail on July 7th, 2020. Since then, larceny for motor vehicle has had a 51% reduction from the previous month. And if you compare the three weeks before and the three weeks after he was arrested, it's actually a 62% reduction. And since then, only one case of, or motor vehicle theft has occurred during the night. And this individual was caught at least five times before he was finally held. The next one deals with retail thefts, and we're having an increased problem with that. So RCPD is tracking a 177% increase in retail thefts when comparing 2020, which is 183 cases at the end of July, to the five-year average, which is 66. And that's between the months of January and July 31st. So RCPD have identified 48 individuals that have been committing retail thefts, and out of the 48, 27% or 13 individuals have stolen multiple times. One individual has been caught seven times stealing in the Rutland City, and currently this individual has seven open cases pertaining to retail theft, trespassing, and simple assault. The other is, out of 13 individuals that have stolen multiple times, all 13 individuals have one or more open cases. One individual currently has 38 open cases. It should also be noted that 75% of the individuals stealing right now are known narcotics users, and 50% have been trespassed, and 10% have, have or are currently living in a hotel or motel. Those are some of the highlights that I noted just in July. That's all I wanted to present tonight. I don't know if Chief wanted to talk about anything else?
Yeah, thanks, Nate. So, yeah, I just wanted to sort of highlight a couple other things that are on here. If you look at the third page, there's the pie chart of the types of calls, summary of the types of calls that we respond to. And if you look at the largest portion there, noncriminal incident, 65% of the calls to which we respond are noncriminal in nature. And so this is exactly why we look to create that position that Matt Proudty currently holds, and something I want you to keep in mind when we look at next year's budget. And the hours that Matt's working right now are 10 to 6:00. And speaking with Nate, again, doing an analysis of those types of calls, they generally occur between 11:00 in the morning and 8:00 at night. So we're trying to really, you know, target, but again, just so we're there, Matt's there 40 hours a week, five days a week. So we're looking to expand that, show the success of that program and expand that hopefully for next year. You know, as Nate mentioned, the retail thefts, I mean, listed, you know, the, sort of the addresses that we respond to regularly. And by the way, we meet every two weeks at 8:00 in the morning on Tuesday. Some of you have been there before, and we go through every address. We identify every address we've been to at least three times in a two-week period to see what the underlying issues are. And the retail establishments, again, we're typically responding there for retail theft-type calls. But we look at who's involved in those calls and what are the underlying issues. And as Nate mentioned, there's typically some connection to drugs. You know, Nate mentioned one particular individual that has 38 outstanding cases. I think there were some social media posts that mentioned, I think he had 27. Nate looked today, apparently identified 38. So, you know, it's somewhat frustrating, and you look at some of the comments that, where people have responded to those sorts of posts, and others have expressed their frustration. And I think you've seen, I think we've had groups here expressing their frustration. We've had individuals representing various neighborhoods come to police commission meetings expressing their frustration. So we're starting to see that more than we had in the past. You know, neighbors coming out, being represented, expressing their frustration with sort of the lack of accountability for those who are, you know, engaging in this sort of, or creating chaos in the communities. So, you know, with the reduced staffing, going back, and we're not looking to, we're not suggesting that incarceration is the answer all the time for these sorts of things, because there are underlying issues that we'd rather address, that's our preference. So going back a few years ago, about three years ago, we sent two of our, two members of the department to Boston to learn about this model called the Police Assistance Addiction Recovery Initiative. And so we created what we call an overdose response team. So whenever there were non-fatal overdoses, we'd respond to that residence, reaching out to the family and trying to connect that individual's overdose with services. The report, this report goes into some of what the numbers are, and the overdoses are up. And the fatals aren't necessarily up, but the overdoses are up. With reductions in staff, and we've been forced to leverage other resources, so we're partnering with Turning Point, where Nate is actually referring those types of calls to Turning Point, and they've, to the extent they could have increased their capacity with recovery coaches and trying to do that other ways. But again, much of what we can do is really a function of our staffing. And so we are trying to leverage other resources in the community, so. So, yeah, that's what we wanted to share tonight. As I said, you know, this is presented at the commission meeting every second Monday of the month. And as I said, we meet every, every other Tuesday. We met last week, so we'll meet next week again, Tuesday mornings at 8:00. So feel free to join us.
Alderman DePoy.
Thanks for the report, Chief. You mentioned that some of the retail establishments that are out there that get hit. I'm wondering, how are the pharmacies doing? Because I've heard that the pharmacies tend to be some of those most hard-hit, at least nationwide. You see reports on television, CVS, Walgreens, you know, when we used to have a Rite Aid. What are the calls like to those places?
Well, it's anecdotal, but they're negligible. You know, certainly relative to the rest of the other retail establishments, unless you think otherwise. And we don't see the number of calls at the pharmacies as we do to those that are listed on here. You see, they're not listed by name, but they're chronic repeats on the fourth page of the report. 90 Shop and Plaza, that's Walmart. 234, that's Price Shopper, the hospital. And again, these aren't just retail thefts, but it's the chronic, where we're responding to chronically. And then the last one is TJ Maxx. So in terms of where we're responding for thefts, those three locations at the plaza, Price Shopper, Walmart, and TJ Maxx.
There are calls at CVS, but they don't have as many as Walmart and Price Shopper, TJ Maxx.
And again, meeting every two weeks, we're highlighting every address we've been to three times in a two-week period. And I can't recall the last time CVS or any pharmacy has shown up as a three-peat location where we responded at least three times in a two-week period.
Okay, well, that's great for them and great for my question, and hopefully we can do something about the others. And, Mr. President, I have one last question. So there was a report that I was watching the other night about recruitment of police officers nationwide. And they brought up the retirement plans that officers have, and a lot of them are walking away from their retirements. They might, supposed to have 20 or 30 years, whatever it is, depending on the municipality, depending on the state. And they're just walking away from their retirement and going into some other line of work. My wonder, and I'm just asking a question of you, it's nothing that we need to take any kind of action on tonight, but maybe sometime we might. In your recruitment efforts, is there a possibility that we could maybe grant some of these officers that are leaving other places, grant them their 10 or 12 years that they might already have on the job at another department out of state even? And just say, look, we'll grant you the 10, 12 years here. Come work for us for the next eight or the next 10 or 12, and you'll get your full retirement here. Is that something that has crossed your mind or anything that they've been talking about? Because I guess they're doing it in other municipalities that are really getting hit by retirements, by attrition, everything else like we are. And apparently they're drawing some guys back out of, not retirement, because they, they're not getting a pension or anything at that point, but drawing them back into the field and filling open spots.
Well, I think with municipalities that have a local retirement system, retirement plan like we had here, might be possible. But the fact that, you know, we have a state retirement system might be a little more difficult. I don't think there, I don't believe there's anything in the state retirement plan that would allow for something like that. In terms of getting credit for, because there's been no, if that had, if that were to be proposed, my sense is that there'd have to be significant sort of back contributions made to the retirement system for that to happen. But I don't believe there's anything in place right now for that, that anything that provide, there's nothing in the retirement system currently that would provide for anything like that.
Alderman Tadia.
Thank you for compiling all this data. It's really helpful to have. I was just wondering if there's like missing data for how many cases involve weapons? And I was just wondering, some of the statistics, yeah, where are, where is that data?
So for that, this report, I've finished July by September. And you'll have the full report, and that's one I'll add in. I have to go through everything, find out which ones are involved on, and which ones are not. Probably those and stuff like that. You got a little more information. It just takes a little bit, this is just a synopsis so far.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to seeing your final report.
We've got a new records management system. We've been on now for a few months, maybe?
Since January 2nd.
Yeah, so we had transitioned from Spillman, which was a statewide system. There were two really, Spillman and Valcor, and the state transitioned everyone on that state system to Valcor, which was the other state system, which, you know, most people were on, most agencies were on the Spillman system. And so switching to Valcor was new to us, and there are some nuances with that. So we're still working through some of those things.
Alderman Torrey.
Thanks. Thank you for this, Chief. Two questions or points, I guess. It's nice to hear the opioid response team. I wasn't sure where it was standing, so it's nice to working with Turning Point to do that work. You know, when we look at the budget for next year and the lack of police officers, and I don't want to get into this conversation again of cutting police officers. And so I'm wondering if some of those positions could be filled in useful roles like that, of like helping kind of facilitate between the data and Turning Point or other partners. You know, and then maybe if you got an officer, maybe that seems more useful, you could replace that position. So I'm wondering if that might be something that you put in your budget. And then likewise with the kind of synopsis here of the noncriminal incidents, again, I think it's great, you know, the work that's going on, and, you know, I hope Proudty does really well in this position. But I think I've said before, it'd be great to see that really developed. And so, you know, when we look at this, more than half is noncriminal in nature. Seems to maybe put some more effort and more resources into that. Maybe it'll help the morale and whatever the crew and focus on some of the other issues that we have.
Yeah, that was the idea, you know, the, as I said, you know, there's such a chunk of calls that we respond to that there's no criminal component. And so we really need a sworn officer to respond to those. And having a nonsworn staff respond to those frees up the time from the officers. So, you know, again, our crawl volume's up a little bit, you know, going back when we started looking at, sort of developing this idea, call volume wasn't necessarily up, but the calls per officer per shift were up because we had fewer officers. So it is, it, you know, became more of a burden on each individual, so carrying more cases. And so, as I said, even though the call volume wasn't up at the time, calls per officer were. So we felt it was important to do something else.
And I just have one thing, Michael, just coincidentally to what you talked about, especially the retail thefts. I happened to be in a local clothing store on Saturday night, and when I was checking out with my items, out the door went a person with a handful of clothes, and bells are going off and everything else, and there was a, the person that was checking me out was trying to point it out to her manager, and the manager said, "Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere with the person." And so when I finished my checking out, or whatever, and I just asked the manager, I said, "Is that store policy?" And yes, it is store policy, because frankly, we don't think there'll be any repercussions for, even if this person was caught. And that goes back to what I've been preaching and what we've been talking about for a long time here. And I wrote in my op-ed that they go into, they might get cited, but it's a revolving door. They're not, they're not going to go to jail. There's not going to be any consequences for their actions, and they're going to go right back out to it again. And I think that that's what you're seeing, is a lot of repeat offenders, when you see the same person doing some of this activity over and over and over and over again. So again, that, it needs to be addressed down the road. These folks, the men and women in the police department are doing their job. It's breaking down in our judicial system and in our legislature and in those where change needs to be made.
You know, I mentioned a couple meetings recently too, that we're trying to put together sort of a town hall as we did with the homelessness program. And so we're looking to do something with the judiciary, if not those from the judiciary themselves, potentially some state legislators, to talk about these issues. Because Department of Public Safety is looking at, and I'm not sure exactly what they're putting together for the governor, but they're looking to put something to present to the governor on sort of the difficulties local law enforcement is dealing with. And so I'd gotten a call from the commissioner, and, you know, and at the end of the conversation, was just to summarize what would you tell the governor? And I, my response was sort of, that I, you know, that I gave was based on the number of neighbors coming to the various meetings expressing their frustration. And the message was that the community feels like there is no accountability for those in the community creating chaos for the community. And that's, that's really been the message. And so I'm not sure what the, what the. And that's, that's really been the message. And so I'm not sure what the, what the, actually ultimately get presented to the governor and, and the legislature, but that's sort of the message. So, you know, there's, with anything, there's usually misinformation out there. So we want, you know, again, those who are sort of making the decisions, one big thing is on bail. You know, there's some misinformation out there where people can't be held on bail. As I said, it's not always appropriate. But I can tell you, you know, if you look at any of our releases on, on Facebook, over July 4th, there were about three consecutive days where it was the same individual that we were picking up, I think pretty much three days in a row. And there was a, an article about this that Patrick had done in the Herald. But it was three consecutive days, I think it was, with retail thefts. And the person was, was not held and was regularly released. It's frustrating. And I, and, you know, being short that we are, there's occasion that I, that I come in and I'm, I'm out, you know, on patrol. Two Sundays ago, we had a retail theft at TJ Maxx. I responded, found two individuals behind TJ Maxx who were responsible for the theft. And the, one of the two individuals had an outstanding warrant for, for failing to appear on a retail theft. And there was no bail. And the, the notes on the, on the warrant were to cite for the next day the court was open. So they were told to appear on a particular day, didn't appear. And so now the court's saying, we really mean it this time. We want you to come next time we're open. So that's sort of what happens. And, and there are warrants that, that have come through with the bail set at the money in the person's pocket. So again, absolute guarantee that the person will not be held. That person will absolutely be released. You know, there are some provisions in the bail sections, you know, in the bail statutes that, that allows, that will allow a judge to set bail if they can't reasonably protect the community with conditions of release. Well, the fact that someone's got thirty-eight outstanding charges, and this person continues to commit these sorts of offenses, to me, says that, that the court can't adequately protect the community from this person. So, and those are the conversations that we want, you know, that we'd like to have with the judiciary, those at least on various committees related to that. So we're hoping to do that in September. We're having our project vision meeting now September fourteenth at night. So it looks like we'll probably push that off until, until October.
Any more questions? Thank you very much, chief. Appreciate you coming in. Thanks for the report. Oh, chief, I do have one more. Is this on your, available on your website? Or is, will the version be?
We can? I don't think it is right now.
Yeah, it's not right now. You talked about this before.
Yeah. Okay, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Right, thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on, Treasurer Markowski, it is your turn at the podium.
Did we have the honor, right?
I'm gonna just put that after you. Yeah. Because Barbara's not here. So we're gonna start with the proposal for the lease. How about that?
Okay, the first item that I had tonight was for, I put together a proposal. I reached out to three municipal leasing companies that we've used in the past, looking to lease that two thousand twenty-two trackless sidewalk, sidewalk tractor. And I believe, we approved it in Board of Finance to be placed in service this season. We're hoping that that tractor will be ready September, October. So the, the purchase price of the tractor is roughly three hundred and sixty thousand. I came up with three different options, recommending using the municipal leasing consultants that we've used in the past. They quoted a rate of three point six two percent per seven-year lease. It's pretty close. The annual payments are pretty close to what we had funded it for that. So that is my recommendation for the board for that purchase.
If this was approved in finance, do we need to suspend the rules?
I think we still need to approve which lease, right?
Yeah, we need to approve the, the financing.
Okay, financing, yeah.
So, motion to authorize for the mayor and city treasurer to execute the lease financing documents with municipal leasing consultants?
One second.
That's what I just said.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Your motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Go ahead.
And a motion to authorize the mayor and city treasurer to execute the lease financing documents with municipal leasing consultants for the financing of the two thousand twenty-two trackless sidewalk tractor with total principal of three hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents, seven-year term and interest rate of three point six two percent, with the document subject to review and approval of the city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments?
I have one question. I know it's a lease purchase agreement, but do we know what the life expectancy of this unit is? Is it longer than seven years? Would it last ten or fifteen, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
The ones we have right now are twenty, over twenty years old.
Okay.
Twenty-five years old.
They're barely working, but they're twenty years old.
Any more questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Mary Ann, if you could move on to your report. That'd be great.
Okay. I circulated the financial reports for July, and when you're looking at July, it's always preliminary. We're still doing, things can change in that. But I'd like you to see the expenses. You're not seeing any trends or anything, but it should be available to you, to have those notes. July is such a busy month for us. We set the tax rate on July nineteenth, I believe. And I have a lot of taxpayers calling out questions sometimes about, you know, how'd you get there? So it's the, that budget that we pass in March, all of the debt service that we've passed along the way, and then all the social agencies. We take all of those things. That's really, that's what we have to raise taxes for. So then it's so important, we reduce that with the non-tax revenue. We talk about that a lot as we go through the year, because that really offsets what do we need to raise for taxes. And the other large item is the transfer from the proprietary funds, because the general fund supports the water sewer fund. So we get a transfer in. That helps to reduce what we need to raise for taxes. So that's how we get, and then we're looking at our grand list, based on the current grand list, and what we need to raise, that's what's in that tax bill that you get. It was very nice to be able to offset that little increase in the municipal rate by the changes to the school rate. So that's how we got there. I just wanted to go over that briefly. So I'm not going to get into the July numbers, but they're there for your review. Does anyone have any questions on July?
Should we send this to finance?
We can, if you'd like.
We normally do that, don't we?
We normally do on a quarterly.
Okay.
Like, the quarterly reports are more meaningful, especially that first quarter, because I should have most of the audit adjustments completed by then. So, okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mary.
Oh, and one other thing, taxes, first quarter taxes due on August thirty-first. If someone didn't get a tax bill, call, let's, we don't want you to be late. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Treasurer Markowski. Okay. Moving on, the agenda, we're gonna move on to Barbara Spalding, RRA, VCDP public hearing request is pages one and two in your packet. Barbara is not here, so I'm gonna read the request. And there is a couple of changes. It says September 5th. We're gonna update that to September 6th at six thirty. So, the city is required to hold a public hearing for the VCDP application for the renovation of one twenty Maple Street. The notice must be worn with no less than fifteen days prior to the hearing. Therefore, the RRA respectfully requests that the aldermen set, set the required public hearing on September 6th, per the attached draft notice. A copy of the draft application will be provided at this meeting. If you have any questions, please contact Barbara. I need a motion to suspend the rules and then a motion to set the hearing.
So moved.
Your motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. And now I need a motion to set the public hearing for September 6th at six thirty PM.
So moved.
Second.
Our motion has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Alderman Torrey.
Thank you. I'll be voting no on the motion for the same reasons I expressed at the last meeting. The last VCDP board meeting, the awards were two hundred and fifty thousand for a two million project, that, two million dollar project that created, renovated three vacant buildings. Eight hundred and fifty thousand out of a one point five million dollar project for twelve new units. One million dollar award for a twenty-seven million dollar project that created ninety-four units. We're asking for six hundred and fifty thousand out of an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar project to create at best five units.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Very good. We are moving on to reports of standing committees. Alderman Torrey, Public Works.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, August ninth, to discuss the Forest Street Neighborhood Paving Project. I served as chair. Other committee members present were Alderman DePoy and Alderman Gillum, who had to leave at six fifteen for a bus meeting. Others present were Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Dungus, Alderman Franco, and Alderman Talbot. And others present, the mayor, Commissioner Rotundo, Associate Engineer Ted Gillan, Pete Kelly, the engineering tech, Chief Kukuln, Gordon, and then a host of community members. The meeting convened at five thirty PM to discuss the proposed Forest Street paving project. Commissioner Rotundo began the discussion with a presentation on the work that has been done to this point, the various considerations that needed to be taken into account with the projects of this scale, the existing road and sidewalk conditions in the neighborhood, and a series of before and after photos from recent city DPW projects that help illustrate the impact of the proposed project modifications. Commissioner Rotundo continued the presentation with a specific information about the Forest Street Neighborhood Paving Project. On Forest Street, DPW was looking to create two eleven-foot travel lanes, an eight-foot parking lane that would extend from River Street to Pine Street on the east side, and a green belt of about three to five feet on, on both sides. The only modification to this plan was just north of School Street, where in front of Belomos Market, an additional parking lane would provide a small number of necessary additional parking for their commercial business. Commissioner Rotundo concluded his presentation, reminding the committee that the current plans provide the best balance of safety, complete streets, and stormwater, stormwater management principles. Additionally, the design helps protect the city's investment in our streets and our sewer system, minimizing the impacts on the budget. Community members then expressed their interests and concerns. The potters discussed their property near Traverse Place, and how the new design would eliminate parking for them since they are north of the Pine Street intersection. Commissioner Rotundo discussed the possibility of adding a parking lane on the east side of the street in that area. Discussion then moved to the subject of on-street parking. A number of residents in the neighborhood have been using the city right-of-way as parking, with some spots being paved by landowners, and others just turning into dirt and mud. Many of those present at the meeting expressed how they felt parking in those spots was much safer than entering and exiting a car parked on the street. They also expressed the issue of the November to April night parking ban, and how the spots that they have used for many, many years have addressed that issue. Some landowners spoke to having no parking on their prop, having no parking on their property, and the impact this would have on their tenants. Lynn Markowski passionately discussed her specific issue with owning a house on the corner of Forest and Howe, with not, with no parking on her property. She was particularly concerned with the impact on the salon in her building, and with the winter parking ban. Christina Zulo expressed her interest in coming up with a compromise so that she and her neighbors would have parking available to them. Over the next hour, community members continued to ask questions and get responses from DPW members, Alderman, the police chief, and the mayor. Some community members, like the Goodhales, spoke to their experience on recently redone streets, and how it's had a positive impact on their neighborhood. And Alderman Talbot, on this ninety-degree day, spoke to the climate impact by having more green space with room for trees. There was general consensus that the design was mostly positive for its overall impact, for its overall impact and effect, but that people who have been accustomed to needing the previous parking may be negatively impacted. One need that was also agreed needed further discussion on was the issue of the parking ban. The chair summarized the concerns as a request from the community and those present to add the parking lane east of Pine Street, and to look for any opportunities to create additional parking on the west side of the street, similar to the modifications for Belomos. It was the chair's opinion that a motion to this effect was not necessary. Alderman DePoy moved to refer the issue of the winter parking ban to the parking committee. The motion passed three-zero, with President Dungus stepping in to make quorum when Alderman Gillum departed, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded to refer the winter parking bans to the parking committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman DePoy.
So, Mr. President, I just, I wanted to ask of the chair, if it was his, what his recollection is, because I had asked DPW, the DPW commissioner, to extend that parking lane from Pine up to West. I'm not seeing that, like specifically stated in the report. I didn't think we needed to make a motion to do that, just by speaking with him. He said that they have the capability of extending that parking lane right up to, or at least to the end of the residential area. So if he...
Okay, speak to that.
Alderman Torrey, absolutely.
So at the end, and specifically, I summarized, to add the parking lane east of Pine Street. Oh, that would be wrong. That would be north of Pine Street. I'll correct my...
Editing the report. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman DePoy, for that. North of Pine Street.
That's, that's where my confusion stemmed from, Mr. President. So I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page here with our DPW commissioner, that's all.
That's great. And if, if I may?
Yes.
I believe what happened was, I was saying on the east side of the north part of Main Street, and I got confused. So I'll add the east side of the north.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Is that the end of your report?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Gillum, and then if we have any other questions.
Just a question for the commissioner. I might have left before that, because I've got to go to a bus hearing for the Marble Valley Transit. On the east side, between Pine Street and West, we're gonna put a curb in to mitigate the runoff from that hill also at the same time?
Oh, I gotta look at it, and we'll, we'll take a look at the grades. I'm not positive on that.
Because I know there's some serious stormwater issues there. It usually runs into the middle of the intersection, all the stone and everything. So I was wondering if we could solve that problem at the same time.
I would think that we would. I mean, if we're gonna have off-street parking on the east side, all the way up to the north on West, all the way up to, to West Street, then I would say that, that most likely we'll have curbing there also.
Okay, good.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Alderman Torrey. Oh, we didn't, oh, yeah, thank you. Go ahead. Lynn, come on up. And, yep, that would be great. Lynn, just state your name and your city of residence at the podium, if you wouldn't mind. We use the podium for the television, so they can hear you.
Name is Lynn Markowski.
That works. You live in Rutland.
Okay, again, I am here about the project on Howe and Forest, and I would like to ask all of the aldermen to come down and see for themselves how everything is marked out. There's, some of it doesn't make sense to me. Howe Street has twenty-four feet of traveled lane. Forest Street has twenty-two, and Union Street has twenty-four. Who drives on Union Street, except for the people that live there, basically? The other thing is, is that, to me, the Forest Street issue, they are giving us parking, which I'm very grateful for, but they're also talking about a three-to-five-foot green space that actually I don't think that we need. I'm thinking that if we have sidewalks and curbs, that pushes the parking, at least where they've given us in front of our house, it would give us maybe ten feet or eleven feet to park. Because if you come down and look, where you're getting out, you're getting out, even though they've given us eight feet, you're getting out into a traveled lane. It's, it's totally unsafe, as far as I see. And the other thing is, is that I have a commercial business. The person in there sometimes has two to three people at a time. Also, we have our tenants. And I'm just, help me understand why Belomos has no green space. They have sidewalks, and they have a curb, but they have no green space. What's the difference between their business and mine?
Okay, any questions for Lynn? Great. Thank you very much for your comment. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on, Alderwoman Savage, Charter and Ordinance.
Thank you. The Rutland City Charter and Ordinance Committee met on August tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Members present were myself, Vice Chair Alderman Gillum, Alderwoman Taddeo, and Alderman Franco. Others present were Attorney Blumer, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Talbot, and Chief Kukuln. And the meeting was called to order at five thirty-five PM. The Charter and Ordinance Committee met again to address the inadequacies of the current city noise ordinance, especially surrounding the enforcement with issues of noisy neighbors, car noise, music, miscellaneous noise, and the evidence needed to find a violation. Attorney Blumer sent copies of several noise ordinances from other towns and cities via email to members prior to this meeting to aid the process. Attorney Blumer liked the Schenectady, New York ordinance provided by Chief Kukuln, who is familiar with... provided by Chief Kukuln, who was familiar with the one from his time in that department. Much discussion followed on the different ordinances and the possible combinations that would work best for Rutland City. The committee decided to use the Schenectady ordinance as a draft because its depth gave the most to work with as a starting point and could be modified as needed for the city. It was also decided that Attorney Blumer would send the draft to the full board for noncommittee members that might want to review and send in comments before the next meeting. Alderman Franco questioned if a very long noise ordinances was needed, and Chief Kukuln and Attorney Blumer seemed to agree that more direction would be helpful. Chief Kukuln said they would send Attorney Blumer's draft to his supervisors and gather feedback on what they suggested would work for Rutland. Alderman Franco asked if there would be public comment on, a public comment session, to which the answer was yes. No action was needed, as the noise ordinance will continue to remain in committee for time to review Attorney Blumer's draft and to give time for Chief Kukuln to get feedback about what kind of noise-related calls they receive and how this ordinance may help with issues. The meeting adjourned at 6:28 PM.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Alderwoman Savage? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Alderman Wickham, Finance Committee Report.
All right. The Finance Committee met on August 11th. The topics were non-tax revenue and ARPA funds review. Members present were Alderwoman Davis and Savage, and Alderman Talbot, and myself. Others present were Mayor Lair, President Dungus, Alderman Franco, Andrew Sternisti, Chief Kukuln, Mark Sedakirsky, and Treasurer Markowski. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The first item addressed was non-tax revenue relative to the Department of Building and Zoning. Andrew provided the committee with a memorandum outlining a proposed fee schedule. Andrew reviewed a chart outlining proposed fees for permanent allocations and registration fees. Mayor Lair made note that in developing the fee schedule, there was outreach to contractors who expressed their belief that the fee schedule appeared reasonable. Alderman Talbot incurred if there was a penalty in place for failing to obtain a certificate of occupancy. Andrew noted that the penalty for not obtaining a certificate of occupancy would be five times the cost of the fee. Alderwoman Davis made a motion to recommend to the full board the adoption of the building and zoning fee schedule as presented and to include a double certificate of occupancy fee for requests occurring within 24 hours. The motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The second item addressed was a review of ARPA funds. Alderwoman Davis noted that $150,000 for the Meadow Street Pavilion request could be removed from the list of items still under consideration. The committee discussed the remaining sizable requests from the Department of Public Works, and that a meeting should be scheduled in the near future to review this request. The committee agreed that the parking kiosk upgrade request could be removed from the list of considerations. Mayor Lair detailed items that have been identified within City Hall that would require upgrades and refurbishing in the near future. Alderman Talbot asked if City Hall had any historic designations that could allow for additional funding sources. Chief Kukuln provided an overview of requests related to the police department. Chief stated, "We could reduce the IT hardware request from $100,000 to $40,000." Chief indicated that the premium pay request could be reduced from $80,000 to $24,000. This item will remain open in committee with a plan to schedule meetings with the Department of Public Works, and the Fire Department, and the Police Department to discuss their outstanding requests. The meeting adjourned at 6:20 PM.
Wonderful. Okay, moving on to reports of select committees. We have none. Reports of representatives, we have none. Petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications, of which we have none. Completed Board of Control Commissioners. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Alderwoman Tadio.
I don't have any new business, but I just want to thank all the Boy Scouts for coming and give a shout out to you for sitting through a very long meeting and learning how city government works, and hopefully someday you can all get involved also. So, thanks, guys.
Anything else? All right, before we motion to adjourn, I just want to acknowledge that last week we had some last-minute items that we added to the agenda. Is there any discussion on any of the items added to the agenda last week? Hearing and seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Have a great night.
Shortest meeting ever.